I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the minutes from my last meeting?
Moved and seconded.
Any additional comments, questions? Not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Minutes approved. Bills. We have a list of bills in our back at the honor desk. Any questions on the bills? Not there.
I'll make the most of this.
Second.
They moved in second that we pay the bills. Roll call please.
Holt. Brown.
Aye.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Lightcon.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye. Motion carries financial report. Everybody should have received the financial report in their packets as well. Any questions? Everything good, I thought.
New year.
New year.
Moved through.
Thanks.
It's been moved, it's been seconded to approve financial report. Roll call please.
Brown.
Aye.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Lightcon.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye. Treasurers checks.
Moved and approved.
Second.
Moved and approved that we approve the treasures checks listed. All in favor, roll call please.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Lightcon.
Aye.
Chris.
Approval of the agenda. Any additions to the agenda for today? Moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Approve year-end budget amendments. Everybody have a copy of the budget amendments on their desk? I thought for the most part they looked really, really good. Quite a few under budget. A few over budget.
Not bad.
Not bad.
The national reports basically the LAC, which is pretty good.
Right.
Pretty much flat on.
Was it this year or next year that we can start closing out those old blood damage accounts?
Anytime. Any year. Up to 2011. We have to keep 2011. Anything below that.
Because I mean, when was the last time anybody claimed 2009 or 2010?
See, then when they left their end of the council, the administrative money. And they never put any restrictions on how that was to be used. Other than you can't buy equipment, but. But we could use it for road projects or.
Right.
Put it out in the general. It was just not a. Moved through. We have motion approve the year-end budget amendments. Is there a second? Moving seconded to approve the budget amendments for the year-end. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. First of the year business, we have some motions that Candy has included in our packets for operating for the upcoming year. First one would be to. Board meet on all matters pertaining to various offices, undertakings unless authority is granted to an individual member of the commission. Act for the board, the county auditors authorized to pay all regular bills such as monthly salaries, light, heat, water, telephone bills with discount along with home vac, insert zone and indirect bills when received. Would be the first one.
I'll make that one.
Moved by Commissioner Lightcon.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wakefield. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. The next item of business is no county official or employee shall order equipment supplied or services amounting to $2,000 or more without permission from county commission except for emergency supplies that department supervisors would deem necessary to authorize.
Moved and approved.
Motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Holt, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. Next item is designated depositories. Ramsey National Bank and Trust, Brimmer Bank and West Houston State Bank, all of that was like be designated as depositories for Ramsey County. Motion for that?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Wakefield, second by Commissioner Lightcon. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Next item is Ramsey County Treasurer be authorized to invest county funds as soon as available and cash in investments when necessary.
Moved and approved.
Moved by Commissioner Brown. Second by Commissioner Lightcon. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. The last one would be to set the amount of $5,000 for county fixed assets. Moved by Commissioner Brown, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wakefield. Any further discussion on that? Not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries.
Sarah. Big day for extension today.
Yeah, we do. We have our live roundup today, virtually. So it's been a learning process for all of us. We have actually one, two, three, four speakers today. We start at nine o'clock and we have about 200 people registered. I think there's pre-registered for this event. And we're really excited. We start with the 2021 marketing outlook and planning in a pandemic. And the next speaker will be, if only, we've got Dawn Chisel. She's going to talk about grain bin entrapment. She's a very motivating speaker. She actually lost her husband due to a grain bin entrapment. So she should be very good to listen to today. Farming Without the Bean will be next. And then our last one will be Daryl Richardson with the 2021 Weather Outlook. So we're really excited for today's presentations. And then our pre-recorded presentations are still available on our website. We have about 40 of those available for tomorrow. So check those out if you haven't already. And also we kicked off our shooting sports yesterday. We had our first couple of classes. We've got about 50 kids registered. So between Tuesdays, Thursdays and Sundays, we got them all kind of spread out between humorous classes. So we're really excited to get those kids back to doing that again and get back in the shooting sports rhythm. So we're kind of looking forward to getting today kicked off at nine o'clock too. Anybody have any questions in the extension world?
Thank you very much. Good job with that roundup. It's different than.
It is.
Trying to fight it for a place to park this morning.
I know, yeah. And the food, exactly.
And the food, yeah. It smelled like somebody was making breakfast out there this morning, but yeah.
Not for us.
Not for you guys. Well, thank you so much for everything that your office is doing throughout this pandemic. Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you, Larry.
Kevin.
All right. Start off, I guess, with review of the five-year role plan. So on the first page is our graveling project. Of course, we just moved last year's project down to the bottom. We only have the one road we're grapping this year. It's old turnback 17 by Starkweather. And I've sent the letters out to the townships to follow up on what their share will be. See if they get their approvals. Any questions on that page? What happens if they don't approve it? I guess we just don't do it. That's the way it's been in the past. Never had one. I, yep. That's pretty reasonable. It costs the townships. I have no idea. Township shares 25% of the project and it's split by two townships because it's a line there. It's a little pain. You know, 17. It would be 12 and a half percent. Oh, yeah. For a six-month project. And the second page, we have our big projects, our paving projects. This year we're just doing design work on County Three. Handed the state highway 17. And then next year, the even years is when we do the construction. And of course, we moved last year's project to the bottom of the list again. Any questions on that page? The other, on the, on the other that page around the end of those towns, you see the average daily traffic. And here are not chats to update those there. Not sure why that didn't get done. This, see, next year it will be updating all of them again for sure. But we're getting behind.
Oh, current titles.
In 2016? Oh, yeah. I'm sure some of the traffic patterns have changed. For instance, Ramsey County Eight over there by Rockton on the gravel section. Lately, there's been a lot of trucks running over there. Haven't seen that in the past, like in 2016. So we're interested to see what the, what the count does over there.
Have any idea what was going on on Ramsey Two? Some of those years looked incredibly high for traffic counts. 2004, I think they had 1,200 average daily.
It might have been the condition of the highway. I honestly don't know why the jump. Wonder if there was a construction going on or something else and having rewrote or something. And sometimes when we put them out for a week and sometimes we hit the right week, like a holiday week or something like that. It'll increase them. So you just gotta take an average of the whole five, 10 years, five, 10 combinations.
Would rotten roads, the highest gone by far.
Highway one up here, one of the lake with its prior, busiest one. And of course, the coal road, it's a township road, it's not on here. It gets up there too. Any other questions on that second page? Third page is our chip seal project. This year we chip sealed 3A, which is from handed to state 17. Also 9C, which is over eastern side of the county on Ramsey Island. And of course, last year's project just went to the bottom, I don't like to do it. I estimate 19 miles on that project, so I'm estimating 425. Any questions there? On the last page is our bridges. This year we plan to replace four of them. We normally do three, but that third one and the fourth one are only a half mile apart, so we're just doing both at the same time. One's on the Towner County Line, one's on the Keller way up there in the northwest corner of the county. And we'll be getting help, shared costs on both of those, both of the counties. And the other two are kind of helping the loaders. I mean, there's really no good load debates to them.
With the county care, I'm worried about that too, or? What's? I mean, the county.
On bridge structures, we take care of all of them. Kind of our policy is anything over 36 inches, we supply. And then they're responsible for installation, maintenance. But when you get to a navigable waterway, then we take it over all. Yeah, sometimes there's a.
Trail.
So then when we get those, oh, if you go down to that fifth one, the 2021. That's our bridge we're going to be replacing on Ramsey Four itself, the 17, by Fridges. That's in the design stage for this year. And the construction stage for next year. And I put estimates on what I figured out was going to cost also. But then when we get those ones done in 2022, we'll only have like one that's in really poor condition. Cattle or this one in cattle doesn't get used at all. I don't even think the hunters. So I don't know if it's one that we'll be able to get by with not putting colors back in or not. That's kind of a local decision. The water board helps decide too. But then after that one, we've only got a few left to do. I'm, I'm, there's still, everything we got left now is big enough that they're being inspected by the engineers, so we get charged for that. So the more of these we get replaced, the better off we are that way. I'm not a charter or another inspection that we won't have to do every year. A bit more.
Any questions about bridges? I guess if that's okay with everybody, then we'll come for a motion to accept the changes that are made.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to accept the five-year role plan. Any further discussion?
Can I ask just one question? It's not necessarily on the road plan, but would there be some benefit? You know, we did the base stabilization work on the truck route. Would there be some benefit to maybe trying that on some of the other pieces of the gravel on the county? In small sections or stuff like that? Like you said, that stretch of eight that runs east a lot, it seems always gets soft in those two spots. It makes sense to maybe try that in those spots or, sure, you know, maybe, maybe give it. I mean, we got a little bit of extra money back from the bed for the, from our stuff. Plus we got some cash sitting in the bio, blood money. Maybe we should attempt to do a couple of spots and see if that alters them. Or it seems like we continually gave complaints on these.
Well, when it's seven, it's a soft spot.
Yeah, seven's got some soft spots. Maybe it would make sense to try base stabilizing. Don't have to hold out on rope, but you know, just those spots, plus of the hope to reshape it, get a nice crown on it. Maybe try that one.
How is seven, Kevin?
They firm it up for the winter.
It's pretty good.
Yeah. Real good in fact. There was one kind of a dip. Heard it's a mess there, east end. That was the only thing in a whole 10-hour stretch, so. Wasn't like hearing that table, you know? It got washed pretty like every other road in the county. Didn't have the soft spots anymore.
There a cull there with that soft spot?
No.
Old cull?
No, I don't know. It was probably a soft spot that never got repaired and then it just had a dip in it. Kind of, it's not really like a hog wall or something like that.
With that fabric done or whatever?
We did fill it in before it started freezing and that helps. I mean, help fill the dip in a little bit, but then freeze down like it should have.
Want some of that concrete in or something?
Yeah, we could, we could do that. It's just one, we had a mark, but we just ran out of time.
Like seven has quite a few spots like that where it's just, it's.
A little short.
Only fault is just, I think the underbelly of the road is just, it's, it's soft around here.
There's one where you get calls on it.
And I mean, I drove it last fall and it was pretty neat.
It was pretty bad?
Yeah, it was pretty bad that one that time. But it seems like, for instance, on the west, west end, where you get close to where it runs into a, or there. Yeah, you know, we fabricated the whole bottom of the slough through that big water run. So that's a nice shape, but then what happens is it just pushes the soap, pushes everything out to the edge of the fabric and then it gets soft out there. So they made it run through the bill is pretty good, but the edges get a little soft.
Right where the fabric ends.
Yeah. So the fabric works, but you almost have to maybe go more up or I don't know. There's different options, but I'm just saying we've got a little bit of extra money sitting around. Maybe it would be beneficial to put a land together to try and do some of those little spots to see if we can get a better shape.
Would that work, Kevin? Did we fit that in?
On the blank kind of truck road?
Um, yeah, like, out of the idea.
Yeah, I mean, the truck roads are really hard, yeah.
I just think it would make sense, maybe on that little stretch on the east end or eight. And there's some few spots on seven, you know, try some spots like that and be able to move around. I mean, it seemed like the truck route was pretty dull, so. The same, hopefully, we could, yeah, just, just about it.
We've been putting bags of cement, I guess, all in the, in the soft spots also. That, that does help, but it's just we can't catch up to it.
It only really helped on the four going north.
Yeah, it don't hurt. That's kind of a counter difference, I think. Every time there's a small spot, you can kind of read, you know, sort of put your spots together or something.
Which, yeah, concrete works with the little one. It's all really tight, because when you got a half-mile stretch.
And that's where I think it would make sense, just my mind and some of the longer was to maybe try you know, we did it, what, three miles of base state on the truck road for 50,000 bucks or?
Three and a half miles were 90,000.
90,000, so, I mean, spend. Do another couple, three miles on those other roads and maybe spend seven or 80,000 bucks or something, give it a shot.
We did get four, it's close.
Um, IBI was dry there. They had their tiller or grinder.
Yeah, you saw, we should probably look into it.
I, I like it too because it, especially like on the truck route. Well, the truck route was okay to start with, but it, you know, then they reform it when they get it done and pack it and it gets that nice crown again. So you get it set up again, so it doesn't.
Whole water.
And I think that's part of the problem we talked about over on eight, where you can keep dumping, keep dumping, keep dumping it, then they drive across it. And then it just pushes it all up to the edges and then you got holes and then it rains and the water sits and then they don't, then they don't, you know, and they're going to drive on it again. So then it's just a bigger hole and we're constantly chasing it. Just like maybe we could get out in front of it, maybe it would help us a lot.
That's the key right there, get out in front of it.
Yeah. But just about. All right, that runs off.
Any discussion, any other discussion on the five-year role plan? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion through, thank you. Kevin, uh, security cameras.
Security cameras. I lose the quotes in my back. Oh, my God. NDTC was a lower bid. And they quoted, they asked for some.
How much?
Uh, $6,594.55 for five cameras. Monitor and a hard drive for a computer running.
The, 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 the warranty cover, anything?
Three-year. They, they give us option to rent it also, but I don't, I really love that.
What's a red?
$150, 35 a month. Wouldn't take long there. Almost like that $6,500.
Yeah, three, three-year worth. They'll service everything off, Kevin? Will they, Kevin?
Uh, yeah. Should be able to pay for it. I also told them to warn you that that.
I was going to say, are these similar cameras to what we put in around here then? So basically the same player and everything like that, it just would have its own set of hard drive and not, not as many cameras. And like you mentioned, we, we extended the one on the courthouse to five years, I believe, for pretty, pretty cheap money. So it would make sense to see if we could extend the three to five or something.
Trying to ask him, what's that with cost?
Yeah.
I think that's reasonable.
It's a good idea.
We did it on the volunteer because it was pretty affordable, I think. I can't remember what it was, but it was really reasonable. Yeah, it was, it was really reasonable for another couple of years. And I guess I looked at the system that they installed here. Quality is really, really good. Hand quality and everything, I mean, it's, it's a really good system. I don't know any of that code, but if you can see what's happening, it means. Yeah, the pictures look good, so.
Well, Chris helped me quite a bit with this. Need the cameras for good quality.
What's basically the question on that? I have a couple of for review without the other. I think the motion would prove that.
They moved in second to accept the bid for North Dakota Telephone Company for the security camera system, one of the hardware department. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign.
One thing I have to have. All right, are we done? Yep. We have a device from K L J for engineering services for the Florida they work on that, designing that bridge. And for Ramsey Four. And they amount of $6,895.10.
Moved and approved. Seconded to approve the bill for K L J engineering. That's on the bridge on Ramsey Four.
We have a contract with them, but this is just invoice.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Oh, same sign, or should that be a?
A little direction, pan it.
Pan it, there we, there should be a roll call.
Roll call, hold please.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Brown. Holt. Lightcon.
Aye.
Chris.
That's all I have.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin. Unfinished business, open 19 discussion. As everybody can see, numbers have been coming. As everybody can see, numbers have been coming down throughout the state as well as in Ramsey County, uh, which is great news. Uh, news yesterday was the governor's changing our statewide status from orange to yellow, uh, which is gonna include some increased capacities for bars, restaurants, event centers, up to sixty-five percent, no more than two hundred people, I think. Schools started in-person vans yesterday, uh, for their sporting events in town. Um, I think each participant gets two vouchers to give to whoever they choose. Uh, social distancing obviously included in that. Talked to Annette yesterday, she said vaccinations have been going well. Uh, they've been getting, you know, weekly supply of vaccinations. And they're not sitting on them, they're getting them in the arms as soon as possible, so. And, uh, she said that they're just go through with phase one A and, uh, moving on to, what is it, phase one B after that, uh, which is gonna be a different list of people, but, um, vaccinations are going well. Hey, at some point, I would like to have a discussion about, uh, unlocking the front doors and, uh, opening up the building to the public. I know the city of Devils Lake has talked about doing that, uh, following the Martin Luther King holiday on the eighteenth and reopening their offices on the nineteenth of that Tuesday. And I guess as numbers continue to go down, I think that would be a prudent thing for us to follow. Thoughts, questions?
Have we, uh, I don't recall, we talked to Kerry at the last meeting, when the, when the state's planning on trying to do jury trials and things like that. Again, I guess I haven't asked him, so.
July? I don't really lie to their person.
Okay, so it's, it's a wait, so.
I thought they had some, some trials scheduled for next week, but maybe there weren't jury trials, you know, they're just bench trials.
Yeah, they've been doing match trials. I'm just, I'm just curious, cause you know, that's one thing for serving out the, you know, we worked out the program, but if we were to act, something that would at least put any consideration on this.
Well, I, I think, I, I think we have a pretty good, uh, system in place protecting our workers with Plexiglas. We have the hand sanitizer dispensers on every floor. The, you know, I think masks would still be mandatory requirement for entering the building. I think would be appropriate. But I haven't heard a whole lot of objections. As long as they have adequate personal protective supplies on hand, uh, for people and people understand and don't think that people, and people have been very accepting to the fact that we have been opposed other than by appointments only. But I think they're ready to be able to walk in the front doors without having to call somebody to, to have an appointment to come in or to be with you, kind of thing, but. I'm open for discussion.
Was that the last meeting that we decided to address the issue at the second meeting in January? Did we talk about that?
We did, we did talk before, yeah.
Let's see where the numbers go for Christmas. We haven't really seen that yet.
Right.
No. Cause at the beginning of last meeting, we talked about we'll have to go through Christmas, New Year.
And then see, see what the, your thinking is.
By then we'll know what the numbers look like after Christmas.
I think that second meeting, January, I'll give us some good input then. And we could either do, you know, the thought process of opening up after work with the holiday or we could even push it back to them following Monday or something, give ourselves time to get everything together. Right? I, I think it's reasonable that, uh, like you said, wait, wait another week or two and then we'll see how the numbers play out from Christmas. I hope we won't get above, we have Christmas.
Yeah.
Chris?
Just gonna correct that Kerry says, uh, there were some changes, uh, everything is seized completely through one ten, but we'll tell for this one for certain. Um, they're gonna do some reviewing and talk later.
That's the course?
That's the course.
So it probably be good to have, get, get Kerry in a little bit to see what they're, let's start talking through your trials and at least have that in.
Right.
Andy, what do you think the people have a guard office here?
It's all right.
Look at it.
Um, some would rather see it closed, some would rather see it open.
Look at it.
I, I think that would certainly be reasonable, you know, that puts us three weeks past Christmas, two weeks past New Years. Yeah. The incubation period should be over. Chris, will you work with departments and see what P P's they need or would like and help them get that ordered? Uh, thank you. And, uh, I do think that, uh, the health department is continuing to use the memorial building for vaccinations, using leave yourself for testing. Um, vaccinations for COVID shots in the memorial building, they still do their regular vaccinations for flu and what have you, uh, immunizations in their offices upstairs, but they have no plans on doing COVID vaccinations in-house, um, other than over at the memorial building. Um, I think we found out yesterday and Paula could probably confirm this, that uh, the fishing tournament is not gonna have any activities in the memorial building. They decided that they're gonna err on the side of abundance of caution and, uh, do things virtually. Most of their, uh, things that they generally did at the memorial building was registration, the chili feed, uh, the prize drawings the evening of the tournament and, uh, bands. So, but it was a three day type of event. They started that Thursday went through Saturday evening or Saturday night, so. But I think they have decided to do everything virtually this year on the abundance of caution, so. Anything else on twelve nineteen discussion? Everybody in communication with their department heads and portfolios and, uh, their employees and whether they're telecommuting or working from home or things that they need to do to, to keep their staff and themselves and the public safe with, when doing business. I think everybody's doing a really good job with that. So I feel, feel pretty good, um, with where our numbers have been going. You know? Thanking the staff for making those sacrifices to, uh, that's been required. Any other old or unfinished business? If not, moving on to new business? Great sadness that we lost a member of our, the Ramsey County representative to the Garrison Conservancy District. Uh, John Pearl passed away the day after Christmas. His funeral was last Saturday. Uh, John served Ramsey County on that Garrison board since nineteen ninety-nine. That is an elected position, uh, every four years. John was halfway through his, uh, current term of, that he was reelected to in twenty eighteen. By law, by statute, Ramsey County contributes one mil to the Garrison Conservancy District every year and has since nineteen sixty-five, I believe it was, uh, so for the past fifty-six years, uh, we've contributed to that and, uh, I guess when there's a vacancy within that position, the county commission appoints somebody to that position. That board meets quarterly. Uh, they're made up of twenty-eight different county districts representatives. So we'd be one of, Ramsey County would be one of twenty-eight. And it stretches all the way from William, Williams County in the upper northwest corner of the state, all the way down to Richland County in the southeastern part of the state. Kind of has that center, center swath of, uh, the state of North Dakota. Um, every county district member is a part of a subcommittee. I think they have four different subcommittees, um, that are, and then their chairmen of those subcommittees make up their executive committee. The executive committee meets an additional four times per year. And, uh, the subcommittees meet generally the morning of their regular board meetings. Uh, so it, it becomes a full day of, of one meeting, but, um, and, uh, they've been doing all those virtually, uh, normally they would do those in Carrington where their uh, district offices are located. Questions on that? Should we just put a letter or advertisement online, social media, paper maybe to accept nominations for that appointment?
I had a phone call from Dwayne Decray yesterday and he said we could go proceed on how we wanna do it. Thought somebody, you know, advertised, thought that was a good idea, a lot of counties do that. The next meeting is this Friday. We're gonna miss that. He said they've started the pipeline and they're digging it out of the Missouri pipe. I think he said Washburn. Is that where this is at?
It is, I think it is in Washburn. Um, they're doing the, the case that they call it and they have to drill down um, right along the side of the Missouri where they're gonna have their intake. After they're doing a bid opening in January for the pipeline, they're built a pipeline from Washburn to Lake Ash to Bula, um, to provide water to the Red River Valley. Um, years ago, you know, the original idea behind the whole Garrison Conservancy District was a water supply project for eastern North Dakota. Irrigation or, I think initially it was one point five million acres of, uh, farmland and then it was, uh, restoration of bodies of water that had been devastated by the thirties drought, including Devil's Lake. Uh, Devil's Lake was always included in that plan, the original plan. Um, since then, since the eighty-six and the two thousand reauthorization plans through Congress, most of that stuff has been eliminated except for the pipeline project from the Lake Scott William Missouri River to eastern North Dakota. Into Ash to Bula, north of Valley City. But I think it, uh, certainly behooves the county to have somebody representing us since we have contribute money to that organization each and every year. So we'll take nominations for that. And maybe leave that open till our first meeting in bedwork. I do have some people that have shown some interest, kind of, um, haven't committed fully to it, but, uh, they wanted to look more into it and, and see what type of commitments it would be. And basically it would just be to fulfill the remainder of John's term, whether they want to run for reelection at that time, they would have to do so by filing, uh, similar to any other elect office by submitting a petition for the primary, I believe in twenty twenty-two and then, uh, the general election and, uh, it's all about here. We want to, uh,
Our, our first meeting in February is the second, so it gives what's basically not quite a month then.
February.
Then. So basically gives a month then for people to send a letter of interest in. I guess like, that's the right, I guess I would prefer is, is, uh, advertising for it and having people send us letters of interest, a resume, things like that, and then we can, we can decide, uh, at that first meeting in February, at least in my opinion, how we want to. I mean, if we wanna interview people, if we wanna just select somebody at that point, however we want. At least we'll have people showing interest in it. There might be one person, it might be like, you know.
I, I just. You know, being familiar with Garrison version, what it's done to Ramsey County is pretty damn minimal.
But, you know, we are sending money there every year, so we should have somebody there to make sure.
Absolutely.
Getting some of it back here at least.
I know since I got on the commission, there were the time a few years ago that we talked about pulling out of the Garrison. But when it went to the dock.
It's incredibly difficult to do. Once we got on there through legislation, it's, uh, very difficult, uh, for counties to withdraw from it.
Why you didn't go take your chat?
Well, it, it's not, not quite that easy. Um, because I think Riggs County did that a few years ago and got sued and then lost that battle in court. So it's, uh,
I'm not going.
Yeah, it's, uh, granted, we, we weren't given what was initially promised to us and I think, uh, we needed a strong voice on there to remind them of that. That when the Red River is dry, um, chances are so is Devil's Lake. And, uh, you know, to lose the tremendous recreational fishery that we have. The river was backflowing a year after it went dry. It took decades for Devil's Lake to replenish itself where it could sustain a fishery. Um, you know, from the forties to the sixties. And it, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when, um, it'll happen again. And, and that's something that we have to continue to fight for and advocate, uh, for, uh, state and federally. And that's one, this is one of the avenues to do it. Unfortunately, we're one of twenty-eight, but if we could convince the other twenty-seven or a majority of those twenty-seven that, you know, maybe a two billion dollar pipeline to to Fargo isn't the best way to spend that money either. Or to move water from point A to point B, maybe it's, uh, taking a better look at, at what was initially designed with some enhanced technology features that potentially ease the concerns that they had in Canada, Minnesota and other, other parts that objected to what was initially proposed.
We need a motion to advertise? Then I'd make that motion.
All right. The movement to advertise that we advertised to fill the vacant Garrison diversion, uh, position. And for, uh, for appointment, looking at the first meeting and then they go work. All right, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign? Motion carries. Discussion on Devil's Lake Chamber membership. This is something that I asked to put up and put on, uh, just kind of an oversight that, uh, noticed that Ramsey County was not a member of the, the chamber. Uh, I've been attending those meetings on a regular basis since I was first in life, two, four years ago and, uh, uh, I think it's a wonderful organization. It does a fantastic job. All of their stuff is here, their executive director. They, uh, they do a lot of things for our business community and our community in general. And I think it would be very beneficial to be a part of it. And it's really inexpensive for us to do so. And it's really inexpensive for us to do so. Um, two hundred and thirty-five dollars is the membership fee for a government entity and, uh, Paula brought along a annual report to the community. Um, and they really do do a nice, nice job for the community. They have a lot of events that they schedule and participate in, um, one of which would be the extension roundup today. Um, they're, help sponsor that and serve mail, so, uh, that's the extension roundup. So you guys are missing out today, Paula.
Yes, I feel horrible about it. It's one of my favorite things to do.
It is a, a fun opportunity for, uh, chamber members to be a part of it. But I wanted to bring that up for discussion. We probably, since we're spending money, need a motion to, uh, become a member and certainly open it up for discussion.
Can I speak, Jeff?
Yeah, absolutely.
I just wanna apologize. I know Jeff brought this to my attention, but I, I truly feel as though this falls on me. Um, I've been the director now for seven years and when Jeff called, um, I was just shocked more than anything that, that the county was not a member. It was always my assumption that you were. Um, so I'll take full credit for this error and I just feel horrible about you never were a member because I just assumed you were. So as it goes, never assuming you're fresh. But I've always treated you as though you guys were members. Um, we've always done business with you. We've always treated you as though you were. Um, this two thirty-five really, you know, is just, uh, you know, basically the gesture that we have to go through to get you on our rolls. But, um, we've always, you know, felt as though the county was, just like one of the other members, we've worked with you so closely, um, all the members here, well, you have and Jeff with this, and, you know, we've always worked really closely and worked with Lane as well. Um, so just the gesture of the membership is what we need to get you in our rolls and to, to, you know, work with you the same. So I apologize, I truly do feel as though this is my error in not making sure that this is.
Is there another government acting contributor for our experience?
Well, we have, the city is, is a key member and always has been, um, forward Devil's Lake. I don't believe there is, but I certainly will scrutinize my close to three hundred members a little closer. I'm sure there was probably an invoice that was sent out and maybe never got, certainly not pointing fingers because I'm the director himself, putting all my weight on myself, but I do appreciate Jeff, um, making that.
It was one of those assumptions that I had as well, you know, and instead, until I started really delving into it and, and going to, where's our listing as a, as a member? And, and so when we did some checking, uh, found out that we weren't, so an official member anyway, so.
I'll need a motion that we, uh, come under the chair. Second. Who is on the chamber? Adam or me?
I'm Jeff, Jeff's representative.
Uh, I've, I've been on it for the last four years, really enjoyed it, uh, it's a great group of people, uh, right now is it Kale?
Kale's up.
Kale's, uh, president, Kale Stromy, uh, past presidents, then Ryan Yoder and Aaron Wood and.
Aaron, Adam, were you on once?
I was right after I got on the commission, yeah, but then when I took forward Devil's Lake with Jeff. This is because the meetings are during the day, so I could only take one meeting during the day.
Good.
The move is seconded that we become, uh, members for the Devil's Lake Chamber. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Paula, for the phone. Uh, thank you for everything that, that you and Susie and your staff do out at the chamber offices, uh, well done. You know, it's been a difficult year for, for you and, uh, the chamber members as well, so, uh, keeping everybody informed of what's going on and, and how to deal with all the COVID issues that have arisen over the past ten months, twelve months. Uh, thank you. Uh, anything else on chamber? Paula, did you have anything else?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, approve the 2021 mileage rates. These mileage rates have changed based on O and B. And.
On the fifty-six.
On to fifty-six cents, uh, wow.
I'll, I'll make a motion update the mileage rate.
The move, do we have a second?
How's that?
Move is seconded that we approve the, uh, O and A, O and B state rate of mileage for fifty cents, fifty-six cents a mile. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O, same sign. Motion carries. Visitors and delegations. Chris, did you have anything else from PM? Any other visitors online, Steve? No. All right. Reports on portfolios. Should we start over to my left, uh, Mr. Commissioner Wakefield?
Well, I gotta fess up. I, I have not talked to any of my, uh, department heads. I, I meant to do that this week, uh, and I will do so, but seeing as I haven't talked to them, they're not reporting anything. Um, but, but while you're on me, I'll just add my announcement, uh, I will not be here physically for the next commission meeting, because I'm beyond first vacation of the county. Um, so I will, uh, see if I can work with Candy to, to be on the phone call, but I won't.
Uh, we had a map from, we had nothing there. I'm glad we decided to have it here. I think the numbers have been good, I have, you know. I don't visit that place too often, sign checks.
Boy, no.
No. I talked with, with the recorder, trailer, nothing there, fair board, have a back for the meeting yet. Uh, when it got to, what I got from them, I wasn't able to make a meeting, but I talked to Susie. Uh, your rock fishing claim station is gonna stay over the longest guideline with the cell of, of COVID. My grass cards were in a grant, or was putting in three stairs over the rip ramp for summer fishing, maybe not know what areas would be covered here. Out there to see if they could get a grant for it. Snow removal for Lake Axess was a word gun to all of thirty-five hundred. The Axess point six mile bay, what he's been heading their boat line and then we had pops. And the only concern that they have was seventy-second, seventy-second avenue between Lake's Lake Road that got repaired this last summer and there was a whole bunch of issues going on. Somebody closed the road, a couple of the townships. The only concern she was had is the sides were removed after they fixed them, but they were just thrown in a ditch and she was worried for a vague worry, maybe they would be pulled back out next spring. I wouldn't be totally removed, was the question, but other than that, they followed all the guidelines. Ain't fish, ain't part of them, and they paid two hundred cents. Information out there that they had a letter in agreement. That was the only concern she had, but hopefully someone's not gonna pull the sign back across the road this year.
All right, it's good. Trying to think if I've gotten what, I don't know, you think since, second meeting, just suffered really not much, but home, Christmas and New Years. Uh, haven't, uh, talked for a while back, everything. Extension, obviously, roundups going on, we talked about that already. Uh, I partook in a couple of the, uh, videos last night, but information is, always is a different format, different information, so hopefully next year we get back together and, but it's, it's still better than nothing. I'm glad that they're making the effort to give us, you know, to, to still have that information out there so we can go find it and learn a little bit of something about marketing and economics, everything that's gonna be going on this next year. Other than that, it's all here.
Um, I don't have a whole lot, Candy's been doing a, standing on two jobs with all the, all the, uh, building auditor stuff. Chris has got, he's busy with all that stuff. Uh, veteran service officer Bryce has been busy and that's a, an extremely busy office and I know it's been phone calls coming in to that office and I think Bryce is doing a very stand-up job on, on everything there. Law enforcement center, uh, I did talk to Rob about, um, COVID numbers and he said that, you know, he, you know, a month ago they had some, some outbreaks, uh, but last week when I talked to him, he said, uh, they're bound to do, uh, no, no, uh, COVID cases within the facility, so they had one staff that was out on quarantine, but other than that, they've been, been down to cleared it all up, so they were very pleased with those numbers. They're gonna start with their binax rapid testing. Uh, they were testing once a week, uh, through the PCR, through the Department of Health or the Lake Region District Health, doing that test, but they're gonna start doing their own, uh, binax testing, the rapid testing, uh, which will be good so they can, you know, they don't have to isolate somebody for fourteen days or six days before they get a, a test back, they can do a quick test and get it back relatively quick. They're getting their, all their testing in line and I think, uh, either this week or next week, they'll be starting with their binax testing, uh, their rapid tests gets, uh, soon, so, which will be good. I know the colleges, what we do in there is, I'm not sure if the Devil's Lake schools will be, uh, implementing that at, at there. I know that's something they've talked about, but, uh, yeah, so far so good. Airport numbers are still, you know, they've been increasing, but they're still about fifty percent from where they were a year ago, so, but I think as people start vacationing a little more, becoming, um, things start opening up nationwide, uh, people will start taking a few more vacations here and there, so, and hopefully people continue to line up and get vaccinated. Other than that, that's about it. From my aspect, uh, next meeting would be the nineteenth of January advisory, yeah. Anything else for the good of the order? Motion adjourned. Oh, right. We are adjourned, won't go off the button.